Good morning, Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
I'm Pamela, Commissioner.
I'll now be your re-
I'm the County Council.
Jeff Van Orstall, the County Sheriff.
Risa Farley, Board of Staff.
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder. I have to say that I'm a little bit challenged this morning because my computer wouldn't connect with GoToMeeting, so I am on my cellphone, so I can't see all of you. Lilia and Erica are going to help out today with logistics. And my major announcement for the morning is that we are not going to be making a decision about the site for the Justice System Facilities this morning. We are going to be getting an update from Nick Kirk, Project Manager, and Lilia Neville on behalf of our Public Information Program. And we will have time, at that time, for public comment about the Justice System Improvement Program. So if you would like to make comments specifically about the Justice System Improvement Program, please put your name in the chat, and we will make a list and take testimony at approximately 10:50, 11-ish. We are going to allocate half an hour for that public testimony. So please, if you can't make it, and you have written testimony, submit it to us at our general email box, so it'll get to all three of us easily. That email is bocinfo, all one word, at co.benton.or.us. And Lilia Neville has also put that in the chat, so you have it there at your fingertips if you'd like to submit written testimony. But thank you all for submitting all of your letters and comments today. We will take all of that into consideration as we move forward with our decision-making.
I have a question or a comment. So our agenda says that we'll, that public comment is at 9:00 a.m., and we're asking people now to come back at 10:30, is that correct?
Yes, if there's public comment on something other than the Justice System Program, that can be made now. But we, yes, we are asking people to make comments with respect to the Justice System Improvement Program after the brief presentation at 10:30.
So since that was not made clear on our agenda, we think about asking people if that's okay with them, giving them the option either testify now or later?
We certainly can do that. I am just a cognizant of trying to manage the agenda. We also need to add a real estate executive session later on in the agenda, so we are juggling time. Is there anyone that cannot present testimony at approximately 10:50, 11-ish, if we take testimony at that time? Okay, thank you, Nancy, for bringing that up.
Thank you for checking.
Okay, so I would also like to acknowledge, as we have been our practice this year, that we are here in Benton County on the traditional homelands of the Kaua'apuiya people, Alsee people, and also the Krikataq people. And those peoples are still with us in the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederated Tribes of the Selecs. And we seek to honor their stewardship of this place as we make our decisions moving forward. So with that, are there any comments from the folks that do not pertain to the Justice System Improvement Program? Okay, so next item is to review and approve the agenda. We have two additions under Other. One is a very brief item, considering endorsing, signing onto a letter to our legislators about additional funding for statewide mediation services to provide mediation between tenants and landlords to reduce evictions. And I sent that to my fellow commissioners by email, and it's just a matter of approving the use of our logo. The second is an executive session, I believe it's under ORS 192.6602E for Real Estate. See how that rolls off my tongue, Vance? It's gotten to be pretty familiar. And so we will add those under Other. Any other items to address with respect to the agenda? No. Okay, our next item, this is one that we don't necessarily have on a regular basis, but I'm happy to see it, and that is employee recognition. Is that Sheriff Ben Orstall?
Would that be me?
I believe so.
Yes. Well, I appreciate the opportunity, Commissioners. I spoke to you recently in our meeting about the good work that is coming out of our office, and just the fact that our deputies do an amazing job in all the divisions. I recently gave out some awards, they were, they were late, obviously, but we did some awards recently, just some recognition, I will say awards recognition. And I have additional recognition coming out, but we need to work on, just get some stuff done. So today, I just was gonna read a few of the recent recognitions that went out, and I appreciate your time. And so I know that the desire was to try to have the deputies here. One is currently injured and off work, and then the others work at night, so they're sleeping right now. And so I know they appreciate this, but they would prefer to sleep. So with that, I'll just start off here. Deputy Aaron Gavetoski, he's one of our K-9 handlers. I want to congratulate you on being recognized with the Benton County Sheriff's Office Distinguished Service Award. Your name along with other members of the team was submitted for consideration by Sergeant Hoss Iverson. His nomination reads in part, "On April 30th, 2021, at around 3:45 in the morning, Corvallis Police Department was dispatched for male trying to gain access to several rooms and being violent. After Corvallis Police had multiple confrontations with the individual, he brandished a knife in front of the officers, and the individual was shot. Deputy Gavetoski, along with other members of the Benton County Sheriff's Office arrived on the scene. Deputy Gavetoski immediately jumped into action, began performing lifesaving measures on the individual. Deputy Gavetoski worked with individual or involved Corvallis Police Officers on scene, simultaneously keeping them calm and on task while performing these lifesaving measures. This type of incident can run with high emotions. Deputy Gavetoski kept his composure and remained in control, bringing a sense of calmness to the scene. Deputy Gavetoski used his training experience to immediately jump into action, remaining professional and composed. I agree with Sergeant Iverson's assessment. You and your teammates responded to a challenging situation with the professionalism and composure that exemplifies a Benton County Sheriff's Deputy. You are a credit to your profession and bring great honor to the Benton County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Benton County." Second one's for Deputy Jim Hartison. I want to congratulate you on being recognized with the Benton County Sheriff's Office Distinguished Service Award. Your name along with other members of your team was submitted for consideration by Sergeant Iverson. "On April 3rd, 2021, around 3:45 in the morning, Corvallis Police Department was dispatched for male trying to gain access to several rooms and being violent. After CPD had multiple confrontations with the individual, he brandished a knife in front of officers, the individual was shot. Deputy Hartison, along with other Benton County Sheriff's Office deputies, arrived on scene a short time. Deputy Hartison immediately established a perimeter and began marking evidence. While preserving the scene and related evidence, Deputy Hartison worked with involved Corvallis Police Officers on scene, simultaneously keeping them calm and on task. This type of incident can run with high emotions. Deputy Hartison kept his composure and remained in control, bringing a sense of calmness to the scene. Deputy Hartison used his training and experience to immediately jump into action, remaining professional and composed. I agree with Sergeant Iverson's assessment. You and your teammates responded to a challenging situation with the professionalism and composure that exemplifies a Benton County Sheriff's Office Deputy. You are a credit to your profession and bring great honor to the Benton County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Benton County." Sergeant Ben Drongeason. I want to congratulate you on being recognized with the Benton County Sheriff's Office Distinguished Service Award. Your name along with other members of your team was submitted for consideration by Sergeant Iverson. His nomination reads in part, "On April 3rd, 2021, around 3:45 in the morning, Corvallis Police Department was dispatched for male trying to gain access to several rooms and being violent. After CPD had multiple confrontations with the individual, he brandished a knife in front of officers, the individual was shot. Sergeant Drongeason, along with other Benton County Sheriff's Office deputies, arrived on scene a short time later. Sergeant Drongeason, upon arrival, ensured that everyone was okay, assisted with scene security, and furthermore, Sergeant Drongeason assisted Corvallis Police with the appropriate steps to follow prior to the arrival of additional resources. This type of incident can run with high emotions. Sergeant Drongeason kept his composure and remained in control, bringing a sense of calmness to the scene. Sergeant Drongeason used his training and experience to immediately jump into action, remaining professional and composed. I agree with Sergeant Iverson's assessment. You and your teammates responded to a challenging situation with the professionalism and composure that exemplifies a Benton County Sheriff's Office Deputy. You are a credit to your profession and bring great honor to the Benton County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Benton County." And then the final one here is for Deputy Ted Vaughn. I want to congratulate you on being recognized with Benton County Sheriff's Office Distinguished Service Award. Your name along with other members of your team was submitted for consideration by Sergeant Iverson. "On April 3rd, 2021, at around 3:45 in the morning, Corvallis Police Department was dispatched for male trying to gain access to several rooms and being violent. After Corvallis Police Department had multiple confrontations with the individual, he brandished a knife in front of officers, the individual was shot. Deputy Vaughn, along with other Benton County Sheriff's deputies, arrived on scene a short time later. Deputy Vaughn immediately jumped into action, locating a first aid kit and beginning assisting with lifesaving measures. This type of incident can run with high emotions. Deputy Vaughn kept his composure and remained in control, bringing a sense of calmness to the scene. Deputy Vaughn used his training and experience to immediately jump into action, remaining professional and composed. I agree with Sergeant Iverson's assessment. You and your teammates responded to a challenging situation with the professionalism and composure that exemplifies a Benton County Sheriff's Office Deputy. You are a credit to your profession and bring great honor to the Benton County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Benton County." So those are the four that we had discussed. I have additional. There was four deputies that were involved with an incident where a gentleman had stabbed himself in the chest and kept the situation calm and under control for some time, and were able to finally talk him into giving up and receiving medical assistance. And then another one that's in the works right now with the deputy who provided Narcan and then did CPR on an individual who had an overdose while fighting off the female's male companion who had been playing as a assist. So this is just some of the work that these folks do, and I just want to, I appreciate the time to have the opportunity to publicly recognize them. Just for your knowledge as well, we just had three of our command staff graduate from the Oregon State Sheriff's Association College, and so that's a feather in their cap as well. Kudos to them. So I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. And I appreciate this type of acknowledgement of our employees and their good work. And hopefully we'll see this from other departments as well as it's deserved. So Pat, did you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted it. I have a similar comment. I really appreciate this recognition for the people that are on the front lines, day in, day out, doing a good job in the past couple years with the national news, law enforcement's a tough position to be in. So I think it helps all of us to get the information, what's actually going on in our own community, and I hope that at some point we can have an in-person recognition of Benton County staff that's doing a good job every day. Thanks for highlighting some of your deputies and kind of giving the rest of us a better idea of what a normal day for you folks looks like.
I have a quick question or comment. Sheriff, thank you for bringing this recognition to our attention. Please pass along my thanks from your deputies. And quick question, you said the first Deputy Gavetoski, I'm sure I'm pronouncing that wrong. Is he Bruce's partner?
Yes, Deputy Gavetoski is the K-9 handler for Bruce.
Okay, well, yes, I got a chance to meet him in Monroe on the September 11th event, and he just made a great impression on me, I was very impressed.
I'll pass that along, I appreciate the positive feedback, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the work session. Our first item of business is an update from our Department Operations Center from Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland. Welcome, Suzanne, April.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. I'll just turn it right over to April Holland, our Public Health Administrator for our update today. I'll chime in if necessary. April, all yours.
Hi, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you all today. I'll keep this update rather as brief as possible. I'll look over cases, hospitalizations, and what's going on with vaccination in this quickly changing landscape. A couple weeks ago when I was with you, I mentioned that cases were still very high. And you know, we've seen improvement across the state, but unfortunately, Benton County has not come down from the top of the wave yet. Yeah, so our cases are at a very high plateau. In the last week of data, we had 205 cases, which was up from 173 the week before. And just as an average, in the last four weeks, we've had 188 cases per week in the last four weeks. That keeps our seven-day case rate up there. Right now, it's above 200, it's 217 cases per 100,000 for the seven-day average, and the 14-day average is 399. And I'm sure we all remember that 200 was the extreme threshold previously. So we still have a very high rate of community transition. Yeah, so as I mentioned, Merseygan, and it extended peak or plateau of the Delta surge, increased congregating with schools, including K-12 and university, started, those created opportunities for new chains of transmission. You know, we also do a lot of testing here relative to other counties, so we may be more effective at finding the cases that are out there. Our positivity rate is good right now at 3.8%. So really grateful for all the testing that's going on. Again, we do expect that cases are going to decrease to a low level, but the decrease is just challenged by the high transmissibility of Delta. Delta burns through households. It is very transmissible in work settings and school settings, especially when people who aren't vaccinated. The low levels that modelers were hoping to see first around September and then around Halloween may not really come until the new year. So with cases as high as they are, now is not an ideal time to relax our practices. As we know, winter is an increased time of respiratory viruses if people congregate indoors. In terms of case representation, we're still seeing children disproportionately affected in the case numbers. Kids 12 to 17 comprise about 9% of cases in the last month, and they make up 6% of the population. Younger kids who can't be vaccinated, those 6 to 11, make up 8% of the last month's cases, and they're 5% of our county population, so there's an imbalance there. Our other overrepresented group, which we've seen for the last month plus, is the ages 30 to 49. In the last month, they've comprised about 30% of the cases, and they're 22% of the population. And again, it kind of makes sense, as the vaccination rate could use some improvement in an age group, and those people are very active out in the community and their workplaces. We're seeing a lot of outbreaks still, still dominated by K-12 schools. And as I mentioned before, household transmission is incredibly common, so it's more likely than not when you have one case, there will be more that follow. In terms of hospitalizations, you know, I want to say one more thing about cases before we move on. We were able to look at vaccinated versus unvaccinated. We have enough data now, unfortunately, that we can pull that apart and come up with risk ratios. And people who are unvaccinated, depending on what age range you're looking at, are between 75 and 80% more likely to contract COVID in our community than people who are vaccinated. Conversely, people who are fully vaccinated are only 20% as likely to be infected as people who are unvaccinated. So really huge protective effect for vaccination. Okay, moving on to hospitalizations, they do remain high, but they are decreasing statewide. Our local hospital had a seven-day average of 17 hospitalized COVID-19 patients, down from really high numbers that we saw about a month ago. There is fluctuation from day to day. And overall, the census of the hospital and the availability of beds, again, variation from day to day. Some days, we'll see two or three ICU beds available for the region. Yesterday's numbers reflected eight out of 89 ICU beds available in Region 2, and 11 of 577 non-ICU beds for adults available. So it's nice not seeing zeros there, however, not out of the woods, and still use caution in engaging in risky behaviors. Finally, for vaccination, there's so much going on here. Our Pfizer booster administration is going well. Moderna boosters are in the process of being approved by CDC and the Western State Scientific Advisory Panel. That will be a half-dose compared to the first series of vaccination given. We'll get details and share those as soon as we receive final approval. And Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is also in the works, but it looks like it may be a recommendation of a second dose at least two months after the first dose. And then finally, there has been some discussion around mixing and matching of vaccines. No final word on what the final recommendations will be, but we are preparing and adjusting our planning as we continue to follow these closely. For kids 5 to 11, this group is likely to be approved sometime in November, and we will be ready. The dosing and packaging is going to be different for kids in this age group. We have to order the doses separately, and they may be in limited supply at first. Thankfully, we've already ordered our doses to get us started, and we've connected with all of our vaccinating partners and providers to ensure that they're doing the same. In terms of vaccination events, our vaccination model includes, as you know, using our existing network of providers and pharmacies, and also includes several clinics that aim to fill existing gaps and anticipated gaps between supply and demand, while also meeting our departmental goals of providing outreach to underserved community members, reducing disparities in vaccination uptake. Right now, we have 25 vaccination events and five more pending between now and December 12th. Most are scheduled at schools and some at community locations. We started a week of clinics, actually, two weeks of clinics, last night with a school clinic at Philomis High School, where 140 doses were administered there. The rest of the week will be in Alsee, a couple of locations in Corvallis, at Corvallis High School and Crescent Valley. And then Friday will be at Monroe, and we'll also be doing some vaccination at College Hill School. All week, the last week of October, the 26th through the 31st, so Tuesday through Sunday, we'll have a FEMA van operating a drive-through vaccination event at the Benton County Fairgrounds. And then in November and December, we'll be at many schools, including additional options. So ones I just listed will be at Lincoln School, Garfield School, and North Aldini, as well as at the Boys and Girls Club of Corvallis. Overall, vaccination-related current events are Equity Plan Demonstration of Progress, or our sort of update report was accepted by the state, that outlines the progress we've made in actions taken to reduce disparities in vaccination rates. Lots of work put into this, really proud of our team's efforts there. We also, last Thursday, provided an informational panel at a Corvallis School District Board meeting, and answered questions that the board members had. We had along with us Dr. Adam Brady, a Samaritan Infections Diseases Physician, as well as our health officer, Dr. Thompson, our epidemiologist, Peter Bamworth, our Health Equity and Communications Manager, Rosio Munoz, and I there to help dispel some myths and talk about risks and answer vaccination questions. So I tried to keep that nice and brief for you today, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Christian Barnes?
Yeah, April, I really appreciate the update in the scope of the clinics. There was one in Kings Valley yesterday, or Philomis, I'm sorry. But just, I think it was last spring, and mass vaccination events at Reiser, and we have a very different model. But I think we'll serve as well when the 5 to 11-year-olds are able to join the rest of the crew. But talking to somebody from OSU recently, they were, I think he said, students were 96% vaccinated.
a school clinic at Philomis High School, where 140 doses were administered there. The rest of the week will be in Alcee, a couple of locations in Corvallis, at Corvallis High School and Crescent Valley. And then Friday, we'll be at Monroe, and we'll also be doing some vaccination at College Hill School. All week, the last week of October, the 26th through the 31st, so Tuesday through Sunday, we'll have a FEMA ban operating a drive-through vaccination event at the Benton County Fairgrounds. And then in November and December, we'll be at many schools, including additional options. So ones I just listed will be at Lincoln School, Garfield School, and North Aldini, as well as at the Boys and Girls Club of Corvallis. Overall, vaccination-related current events are Equity Plan Demonstration of Progress, or our sort of update report was accepted by the state, that outlines the progress we've made in actions taken to reduce disparities in vaccination rates. Lots of work put into this, really proud of, of our team's efforts there. We also, last Thursday, provided an informational panel at a Corvallis School District Board meeting, and answered questions that the board members had. We had along with us Dr. Adam Brady, a Samaritan Infections Diseases Physician, as well as our Health Officer, Dr. Thompson, our Epidemiologist, Peter Banworth, our Health Equity and Communications Manager, Rosio Munoz, and, and I there to, to help dispel some myths and, and talk about risks and answer vaccination questions. So I, I tried to keep that nice and brief for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, April, I really appreciate the update in, in the scope of the clinics. There was one in Kings Valley yesterday, or Philomis, I'm sorry. But just, I think it was last spring, and mass vaccination events at Reeser, and we have a very different model, but I think we'll serve as well when the 5 to 11-year-olds are able to join the rest of the crew. But talking to somebody from OSU recently, they were, I think he said, students were 96% vaccinated, staff 95%. And I hadn't seen those numbers and just how important, large part of the county, you know, community of OSU is that any kind of good news like that. We, we hear a lot of the other side of not getting vaccinated and how difficult that last 20, 25% is, but I think whenever there's good news, we ought to include that in our discussion. And lastly, add a future update, I'd appreciate some kind of modeling for what the, what the next four, what we might expect in the next four to six months.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I will look into that for our next update. And would like to echo the success that OSU has seen so far. Very, very impressive public health measures that they've put into place there. And so far, you know, the, the, the numbers of cases and outbreaks coming out of, of OSU have, have not been akin to what we saw in, in the winter and spring. So we hope that that continues and are really happy with everything, you know, in terms of the vaccination requirements that, that they've put into place there for the students and faculty.
Okay, thank you very much, April. Anything else? Much appreciated. We look forward to hearing from you again. I'm sorry to hear that we're on plateau, but look forward to being able to immunize our younger kids and hopefully reduce the high numbers that we're seeing. Okay, we will then move on and hear from you again in a couple weeks. Next item is from our, again, Public Information Office and Strategic Programs. Lilia Neville will lead us off. We will hear from Madison Avenue Collective regarding web communication strategy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning on behalf of John A. Stokes, our Communications Coordinator that is leading this web content strategy project. So I'm really excited to have Madison Avenue Collective with you all this morning. This is a project that has been long on the books and is really kind of the tail end of bringing, just one moment. Testing, one, two, three. Thank you. All right, just wanted to make sure our Facebook livestream could hear me. So as I was saying, this web content strategy is coming at the tail end of our brand launch that occurred at the beginning of this year and that we've been rolling out. So this project is really about bringing a consistent voice to our landing pages of our website across all 15 departments. And you all know Prue and Logan pretty well by now, but they are our project partner extraordinaire with Madison Avenue Collective. John A. has been working quite closely with them, and I believe at this point has hosted two, if not three, focus group discussions with regard to this project. And as part of those conversations, we have met with Benton County's web editors, as well as other communicators within the staff population and other individuals like Johan, our new EDI Coordinator, to ensure that all of those principals are really at the forefront of this project. So with that, I will hand it over to Logan and Prue.
Thank you, everyone, for taking some time to chat with us this morning. We just want to go through a little bit of a focus group style conversation with the Commissioners here and Joe Kirby, talking about the websites. As Lilia said, we've talked to a number of internal staff at the county already, and we have another focus group coming up with some community members, some what we'd consider external stakeholders, right? So really trying to get a comprehensive understanding of the current successes and challenges of the current websites, usability issues, functionality issues, all those sorts of things that we can help you plan for, and ultimately create a better web, online digital experience for members of the community that you need to communicate with. So this is, for, for the Commissioners here, definitely sort of an open discussion, so feel free to throw out thoughts. Also, none of this is, you know, knowing the structure of these focus groups, all of this is mostly anecdotal, right? We, we have other quantitative data sources that we'll be using to, to also cross-reference with this, like analytics and things like that. So the point of these focus groups is to get some of that anecdotal experience from you all. So don't, you know, don't be worried about that, that quantitative. We definitely have that and will be comparing. But yeah, just to, and again, and there's also, if we forget something, like I'm about to ask you about audiences, right? If we realize after, after the fact that there is a critical audience, we've got, you all can contact us at any time, we can add that to the record. So just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. So diving in here, again, thank you for your time. The first thing I, I want to just get out there is, is thinking about the audiences that we need to communicate with through the website. And I know this is probably going to be a list of 10 plus, but I'd, I'd love to hear sort of a comprehensive list from your perspective about who those, who those people or groups of people are that we need to, that the website needs to be accessible to and, and communicate well with.
You just want us to brainstorm at this point, Logan?
Yep, well, yeah, that's, yep.
Okay. Commissioners Malone, Wise, would you like to begin?
I guess I'd need a little help getting started.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Yeah, go for it.
Well, there are several different types of constituencies and, and groups that I would consider. One is anyone that's coming to us for some sort of a service, whether it's to, you know, community development, or assessment, or environmental health, those very, you know, functionally oriented audiences. The other is anyone interested in a particular agenda item, lots of folks that are interested in our Justice Systems Improvement Program decision-making right now. So it might be topical and episodic in nature, but we have to be able to have functional microsites that provide all the information that is routinely asked of us about these special projects. A third is folks that have some kind of disability, whether it's visually impaired, or don't speak English as a native language, and having the option of having material in another language, and being able to provide information for different reading abilities and skill levels as well. So let's see, those are the ones that are top of mind for me, and I'm sure I'm missing others. So if that troubles anything for Commissioners Wise and Malone, jump in, please.
Well, you may have shaken a little something loose. One, one thought is that our website, we see it as a place to go for any information in our community, just in general, that it's, the information is up to date and, you know, with COVID, a lot of our communication in the past year and a half has been related to that. But the county does a lot of, has a lot of different activities, and it really gets challenging as the GT is less able to cover stories in our area. There's a little bit of a void, and I think this effort could be part of that, part of the solution to that, and just that we have factual information that it's up to get facts out there at, at times. And all we have to do is look at the information around vaccinations and that, a lot of questionable information floating around, and especially, we have an excellent health department with lots of information, and I can see the importance of having an attractive, up-to-date website that, that is, is worth going to regularly. A project that I've adopted lately, and it's a wonderful time of year to talk about wildfires as the rains are in our future, but it, late last year, we got requests to ban fireworks, and there were challenges with that, and I would like that discussion to be a wider discussion than, than just fireworks. We have increasing wildfire danger, and I think the county could be a, a good resource for letting people know what fire danger actually is currently, and what, what individuals can do about it. Oregon Department of Forestry does a great job of telling us what the conditions are out there, but they don't have a lot of resources, resources to reach the general public. And so just an instance where I think we could do a real service for our community in getting information out. That's all that's shaking loose so far.
Commissioner Wise?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Number one, was there information about this in the packet that I just missed?
No, this is just a discussion, and there was not background information about it.
Okay, no email that I missed or anything? I just, so on the agenda, it says presentation from Madison Avenue Collective, you know, regarding the web stuff. I guess, I, I do, this is something that I am very interested in and something that I feel strongly about. I just didn't know that we were going to have the Ask This question, so I have not had time to prepare, which doesn't feel great, but it, I acknowledge that it's very important work, and I care about it a lot. But at this point, I agree with the statement that Commissioner Ogierow has made, and I guess I don't have anything valuable to add at this time, because I've not had the chance to think about it and prepare.
Well, I'll go ahead and take owner, I'll go, sorry, Logan. I'll go ahead and take ownership for that. Apologies, Commissioner Wise, for not providing you with further material in advance. Really, this is just a conversation with, of a wide variety of people about how they feel about our website. We don't really want to kind of put out there what we, as professional communicators, think the website should do. It's really kind of a discovery and brainstorming session. So I do believe that framing this as a presentation, it was likely an inappropriate frame as opposed to kind of a discovery and brainstorming session. So again, I'll take ownership and apologize for that misexpectation. I can certainly provide you with a web content strategy proposal that this contract is based upon, as well as any additional kind of context and information from some of the initial discovery meetings that have been conducted thus far.
Thank you. I would really appreciate that.
Yeah. One other constituency that I heard from with respect to our website, and they are kind of that neither completely outsiders nor are they insiders, they're not staff. They are all of the volunteers that work with the county on our various advisory committees and boards, et cetera. They have needs for a different kind of information that's a little bit more granular, and it's, they're not very consistently served by our website to support their work.
What, can you, can you give me a frame on what kind of information that is? Are we talking like GIS data, for example, for a, for a planning committee? Are we talking, you know, policy, county policy on zoning, or like what types of information is that? Just a broad, I know this is broad, but...
It, it is broad, and I think it's inconsistent across our advisory committees and our parks. I don't think there's a commonly, it's kind of accepted level of information that we provide online for, for those bodies and those volunteers. So that's part of why I'm interested in seeing a little bit more standardization support for them. So yes, it could be, it could be matched. It could be definitely policies and code that's relevant to that particular advisory committee, historical documents, strategies, et cetera, that pertain to the topic at hand, and the very basic elements, just meeting minutes and agendas that need to be kept up to date so that not only are volunteers on those committees, but other interested community members can take a look and see what goes on in that particular advisory function.
Is, are, so just thinking about other audiences that I can think of potentially, and you can give me a yes, no, maybe, potential employees, maybe we need to think about...
I'm sorry, Logan, just a moment. Could I ask, could I ask everyone who's not speaking to mute their mic, please?
Just a couple other audiences I'm going to throw out before we hop on from this question, that would be great to kind of get some thoughts from you on. Potential employees or current employees looking for information, need to hit that audience, I'm assuming. Are there certain, are there certain regulatory or, you know, government reporting information that you all can think of that we, we need to be communicating with through the website? And, and I'd love some, some frame around that, if you could. I'm assuming there are some, some reporting responsibilities there.
That's a good question. I, I can't think of regulatory reporting per se. Transparency in general about decision-making processes and timelines is important. And prospective employees, for sure. I think that they are a clear audience. Current employees, you know, personally, I use the website. I use it, I don't keep everything in paper anymore, and I often go to different departmental websites for information. I'm sure other employees do too. And then we also have the, our internal site, the BEAT, which is really much more about internal processes and information, and that's very valuable. So I'm not sure whether you're working on that at all, or whether you're only working on the outward-facing website.
At this...
Yeah, right now, we're outward-facing website. But, but it's good to, that, that's a part of the conversation here, right, is external websites do with large organizations like this, and over a long period of time, sometimes into becoming what we consider like a dumping ground, right, where stuff just gets published there because people don't necessarily think about where it should strategically go. And part of this process tends to be us thinking about whether some of the content that's currently... Because your current, your current website has over 8,000 pages on it, right? So there's, there's a lot of content there, and probably not all of it is appropriate for, not that it, not that it shouldn't, is inappropriate to be seen by external audiences, but it probably doesn't, it doesn't need to be there, right? For those external audiences to get what they need. So definitely something to think about. Okay. If we can think, this is a very like big-picture question, right? But thinking about sort of big-picture strategic goals for the websites, are there things that you really would like to see, from a communication standpoint, the websites do better as we, you know, as we move forward? This isn't necessarily getting down into the granular details of like specific functionality, like we need a blog, or we need a, you know, a calendar. This is like taking a really big picture about what the website needs to do to help you all for the next five, 10, 15 years, right?
Well, I would start off saying service delivery. I think there's a lot more that we can do to streamline some of our services and provide more online capacity for various departments. I know we're working that direction, but it's slow. The other is transparency. So we've made strides that way in terms of having our budget documents queryable online. But I'm not sure how, I don't find that application to be incredibly intuitive. I'm not sure how well-used it is by others in the community. I would love to know whether it is or not. So, or strategic goals that I would have.
Commissioner, were you, just to clarify, were you talking about our citizen transparency portal with the budget?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioners Wise, Malone?
Yeah. I want to go back to, rather than specific groups, the general public, that our website is seen as fresh and a place to get current information, seasonal. Like I mentioned wildfires, well, personally, we're out of that season. But maybe floods, or, and it could be mainly links to where more detailed information is available. But just like I was saying earlier, it's a real challenge to get, connect with the general public with any information that we think is correct. And I think the best way to do that is have a, have a fresh, attractive website that's user-friendly and that, you know, I think we're doing a decent job. But I think leaving it up to you folks to figure out how to make improvements and do a better job of getting, of getting the information out. And I do like the idea about maybe budget summary or, last winter or spring, we went through a fairly lengthy process of developing the budget and maybe a way of at least letting people know what, what we're planning on and where our priorities are and that sort of thing. So some people really like numbers, and I think we ought to take advantage of that.
I'll just chime in without having read any of the documents. I'm not sure where we already are, or what decisions have been looked at. But I'll just share that what I have said in the past is, kind of like what Commissioner Malone said, you know, user-friendly, intuitive, you know, it'd be good to have stuff like a report a problem section, and then a calendar that shows all the advisory boards and all of our meetings, all in one place. You know, I think we should, people should be able to go to the website, find any of the agendas, any of the packets, any of the minutes, and any of the recordings for any of all of our meetings, that those things exist for.
Okay. That's great. Before I, before I hop on or move on from this question here, just quickly, obviously the county is really comprised of sort of two, two little bit different populations, right? You've got your population center in Corvallis and the Womis area, where you tend to have good internet access, those sorts of things, right? And then you have another significant population that is in more rural areas, maybe has some different connectivity situations. Are there specific, unique concerns or challenges or goals for serving people from the rural areas with the website?
As a long-time rural resident, it's a real challenge. It's always been a challenge. And I appreciate raising that question and maybe a separate tab or somehow a separate page for issues that are applied more to the rural parts of the county or the outside of Corvallis, parts of the county, I think would, is worth a try. It's, it's a difficult group to communicate with. And because we are, we are a staggered and maybe little, little community groups, but I think that's a worthwhile effort because we, I think, pretty regularly get feedback that we're not, not in all parts of the county or treating all parts of the county with the same level of attention. So I like that idea. I'd have to think about a little bit how to give you any more specific details.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me prod on that a little bit then, Pat. And again, don't, don't feel like I'm trying to paint you in a corner on any of this. This is all sort of anecdotal. But can you, can you do give me some insight, like the types of, maybe the types of devices that, you know, people are using to potentially access this information, right? Are they using home computers? Are they on cell phones? You know, how are they, if people are in rural areas, how are they potentially navigating the website, or navigating to the website? Or are they not because they don't have that connectivity, right? And maybe we need to do some outreach there to build that awareness.
I think there's pretty good internet access in most parts of the county. I think we're in...
I think Pat throws, maybe a facilitation of connectivity from Kings Valley. My sense is that there are some spots that are a little bit dead. Salt Creek folks complain about that, Alcee. So there are places where the upload-download speed is not so good. I think people use all kinds of devices to connect and whatever works. So this is an area where we'd like to make improvements if we possibly can and increase that broadband capability in some of our more rural areas. And so I think we do need to be cognizant of it. Personally, I haven't really liked the idea of having map-rich, photo-rich website, but I think we have to be aware that some people can't handle that just because of the technology they're using. To that point, it might be kind of nice to have a rotating feature about the issues in a different part of county, you know, once a quarter or something like that, and just be able to feature all of the county. Because I agree, we do tend to be focused on where two-thirds of the population lives a lot of the time.
Yeah, there's, and that's, that's a good point. So, and the types of features we have on our website, right? We definitely want to be conscious of the types of doubt, you know, bandwidth they take up to access and things like that. So, it's good to know, yeah, if you think of anything else along these lines as we work through this, it'd be great to know because we definitely want to help you serve the whole county. So...
Commissioner Wise, if you could... Oh, just quickly, well, a couple things. I'm sorry I laughed at Pat losing connection. I just found it ironic that he was saying that the connection is fine and then that happened. But anyway, I would be interested in what some of the other counties are doing, you know, what, what best practices might be. And, you know, investigating another option, do we have the ability to, you know, have people click on like a low, low bandwidth, low resolution, you know, option or link? I don't know.
That's interesting.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different things that can be done from a development, development standpoint that, you know, from, from resource caching to, there's a bunch of different stuff, right? So we can definitely look at solutions for that if that is a major concern. It was just something that I thought of. Can we talk about any other sort of major concerns that we have with the current sites? I know Lilia, one of Lilia's big pushes, and I agree after we run an audit on this, is the accessibility from an ADA Section 508 standpoint. There's definitely accessibility concerns. Are there other major concerns you all have that we, you feel like need to be addressed?
Being up to date. And I think that that is one of the things that is always, of course, a tension in any kind of web development. The temptation is to load it with as much information as possible and try to anticipate all the questions. But often that means that things don't, that there's too much out there and it doesn't get updated often enough. So that's an ongoing challenge, and again, very uneven across the organization.
And I would just echo that, that keeping it up to date is basically the main concern for me. But I've heard that that is an issue probably on our side as well because I've heard staff convey the fact that they don't have the time to upload all of that stuff. So that's, you know, kind of a concern on our end we're going to need to address.
Any other, any other thoughts on that, accessibility, consistent on being up to date? Okay. Can we talk about, so now I'm going to get...
One of the things I really liked when the city of Corvallis reviewed their website was the feature on their front page that allows anyone to make a, file a complaint. And it goes without, I think, human intervention, although I'm not completely sure, to, directly to the department that it's relevant to. And I think it's made for, much more rapid turnaround for community members to be able to voice their, their comments, positive or negative, and to get response without having to wait through the entire website to try to figure out to whom to direct that comment or request. I, I like that. I think it would be well worth checking with the city to see how well it's functioning, and it would be great to have some, sort of a feature like that on our website.
Good. So yeah, I'm gonna dig in a little bit more granular here on things just like that here nowadays. And so it would be, can you all talk to me about functionality that already exists on a current website that definitely needs to be carried forward to the new website? And when we say functionality, these are little tasks like being able to post a blog or a calendar feature or, you know, a form to reserve a park, right? Those are the types of, so anything that, and again, this is all anecdotal, it's right off the top of your head, it doesn't have to be, it's not comprehensive, I don't expect it to be. But things that are in place on the current website that we definitely need to carry forward to any future iteration of the website.
Personally, I think that's a question much better directed to departments than it is to us because the granularity of those functions is something that we don't interact with very much. None of us have any kind of posting privileges, and so it's tough to answer. But I will also turn that back to my fellow commissioners in case they have better insights than I.
Yeah, and then I would actually turn that a little bit towards, back towards you. If you could put on a lens of a, of a website user on this as opposed to a poster, that would, that would be helpful, right? Like what are the things on the website that you use every time you go to the website, right? That we need to make sure those, those resources are, are tools are preserved.
I like how it shows, you know, the current, three or four current news blurbs.
I think, again, I think I'm having a little bit of trouble on quite understanding the functionality that you mentioned of reserving a park area, for instance. We have both fairgrounds and natural areas and parks. We have to have that functionality for people to interact in that way. I would like to, again, see a little more of an ability for people to fill out forms and, and file them online rather than to have just PDF documents, download and go out and then somehow get to the county. But I'm a little, a little out of my depth, so.
And that's fine. Yeah, that's totally fine.
Yeah, I think, I don't, yeah, I don't think right now that you can reserve a park online. You have to call, and like Zan said, get the, get the paperwork there. But, so that's a great idea. I would love to see that functionality on our website.
I, I'm not entirely sure, but I do think, and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do think that we just launched a new parks and, I'm sorry, natural areas, parks and events reservation system. So I do believe we can now make reservations online. Thank you. See some nodding from Joe.
Correct. Thank you, Lilia.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little bit varied though, but, but yeah, you can't, you can't get to it. So we made that discovery in another, we had this, almost this identical conversation with another one of our, our focus groups here. So, yeah, there are several things that maybe because of the current architecture of the site are there and we might not be aware of it. Like we were able to find a comprehensive staff directory list through a little digging in our last meeting that some of your staff were unaware even existed. So, okay, so it sounds like there's, there's a few items that are currently in the site that need to be preserved. It doesn't sound like there's a ton we're aware of, but that's totally okay. Can we think about things that, things that don't already exist on the current website? You've talked about a couple of these that would be great to have in the new website. So these are things like Zan, like the file a complaint or report a problem tool that you mentioned, the ability to complete, you know, the vast majority of forms online as opposed to having to necessarily fill it out and turn it into an office physically. Are there other things that would be good to see completed through the site?
Well, I think one of those that goes along with that is having some sort of a uniform pay portal for the county. I think that that's been a challenge. I know that our IT department's been working on that. So that, and I think that's part of the, having the seamless online submittable of paperwork or a reservation or anything else, being able to pay for that service. One of the other things, and I'm not sure where this belongs, is that we have kind of a family of websites, not only our primary website, but the fairgrounds and the fair each have their own website and... each have their own website, and then our community health has its own website, and I was not even aware that there was a separate community health centers website for the first couple of years I was in office. And that was a big frustration when I realized that they were parallel and not linked, and I was looking at the wrong place for information. So, and I think they are linked, but again, it was one of those things that was not so obvious, and so I didn't look in the right place.
I'm going to take my nice comments about finding your telephone back. Couple things, and they're general comments, but user-friendly. Every website is different and some require quite a bit of experience before they work very well for the individual, and at least the basics should be as user-friendly as we can get. The other thing that caught my attention is the 8,000 pages that are currently on there, and I think, not just adding, but subtracting when, when things are out of date, and I have no idea how practical that is or how that's done, but I think that's important, so that we're not, not so cluttered and bogged down with information that may not be very pertinent to, to today, so. Cleaning up is always a good idea, as I remind myself, and need to do a lot more of it, but easy to add unless we're ruthless about it, kind of not so good at deleting things that are no longer pertinent, or put them in a parking lot somewhere that may be still there but not, not coming up as easily as the information that we're really trying to emphasize.
Any other, any other functionality needs that would be great to have on your side? You know, definitely some better navigation is key, some tools like reporting a problem, more ability to fill out forms online, uniform payment, online payment portal, connectivity are linked with auxiliary websites like the fairgrounds. Other, any other items?
Can't think of anything else on hand.
Okay. And again, you know, we create a, we create a comprehensive list by talking to lots and lots of people in this process, so. Commissioner Weiss, you have something to add there?
Sure, just a question, if we think of anything in the next few days, should we send that to you, Lilia, or?
Um, it would be... Oh, go ahead, Logan.
John. Lilia, do you want it to go to John Avi?
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah. It'd be great for it to go to John Avi. Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
You all are more than welcome to add to this conversation moving forward, so we just wanted to take a little time. So I have one, one more question that I'd, I'd love to ask you all, and then I'll let you all move forward with your, your day here, too. Can you talk to me about, so I've heard this, this comment about needing a better user experience or user-friendly, right? I'd love to understand what user-friendly means to you, right? Like, what, what are you running into, and this is a little bit hard, but getting some descriptions of this is helpful. What, what challenges are you running into on the current website that makes you feel like it's not user-friendly, so to speak, right? And that could be like problems that you have viewing the website on your phone as opposed to a computer desktop, because that experience is different, right? It could be just simply like, I click down the navigation and I can't ever find what I actually need to find really quickly. It could be, you know, how the, the look of the website, the design of it, right? There's a lot of things that could go into this, but I'd love to hear, again, this is most anecdotal, right, but what that user-friendly means to you, and then specifically related to this website.
The one thing that comes to my mind is like the search function, just easily being able to search a keyword that you're looking for. I feel like now when I search something, I don't usually find it, but that might just be because it's not on the website, I don't know.
Navigation is the first thing I think of, and it's not particularly straightforward, and I think most of the navigation, department by department is both, I think, I can't even remember, horizontal and the sidebar along the side, but the sidebar along the side organization is not always intuitive, and again, variable in structure, it seems to me, across some of our departments. So, it's challenging. One of the things I think that is tough is that, you know, you can get this kind of structural sense for each department and who kind of puts what by looking at the website, most of the time, but when it comes to special projects, that information is not as easy to find or important document that pertain to a particular department. Sometimes it's a lot harder to, you have to really dig to find what you want to find. I don't know how to do that better, and especially across such a diversity of departments, but it would be very helpful. For me, this has most often been the case in community development, trying to find report on water assessment, back to four years, or our habitat conservation plan, prairie plant species, or some of those fairly foundational and important documents. They get, they get buried after a while, and sometimes I think they just get discarded in iterations of the updates, and there's not a, there's not a library. I know there are better ways to do it.
One concern I've heard is just the ease of finding meeting links, especially now in the day and age of COVID and so many online meetings, just making sure that we have the link just very easy to find.
All right, so one, one quick, and feel free to add to this list about user-friendliness as we go, just one little follow-up here regarding navigation. So right now, the navigation is really focused on, it's organized by department, which as a, as a user of the county website myself, I've sometimes had trouble finding, it seems you have to know what department is responsible for the task you're looking to complete to find the information that you need, right? So if I'm unsure about whether I need to go to the community health clinics or the health department for a COVID concern, for example, I'm going to have to click around and I'm going to cut my, my camera here real quick, I'm getting a low quality, or a still connection, notice. So, that finding that information is partly dependent on your knowledge of the county government structures, correct? Is there, and a lot of thought would have to be put into this, but is there potentially a, a better navigational structure for the website that centers around user tasks as opposed to departments? And this is maybe a higher-level strategic question, but it's, I think it's something, something to think about, and we might not, we probably won't get an answer on this today, but can you potentially see value in that, right? So as opposed to having a navigation that lists a bunch of departments, and then you click into the department, and then you, within that department, you have to navigate to the right division or the right section of their website. Your navigation is instead based on user tasks like, I need to pay a bill, or I need to, you know, access this, or I need to attend a meeting. Is there, is there potential value in that? And then also, does that cause other potential user challenges that we need to think about?
Can we do both? Because if, as, as people describe it, that kind of a, of interface would be very good for, for users that have some function that they need to engage with the county, but it wouldn't be very helpful to a prospective employee or someone, a colleague from another county, or, yeah. So I think that there's a place for both types of approach.
A hybrid certainly is, is possible, yeah. Other thoughts on that? Okay. All right, everyone, well, that's, that's all the questions I have for today for you all. There may be, you know, again, there may be follow-up conversations, communication as we go through this process. We certainly welcome any additional input you all have, so please feel free to share that with John Avi and Lilia. The more information we collect at this stage, the better, to help you all plan effectively for the next iteration of the county website, so. Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Logan and Prue. Lilia, can you give us a bit of a timeline and the kind of, the logical next check-in points with both the supportive commissioners?
Yes, yes, definitely. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to provide a few closing comments, Commissioner. Thank you, Logan and Prue, for joining us this morning and facilitating that conversation. Commissioner Weiss, again, my apologies. John Avi and I will schedule a one-on-one with you and bring you up to speed and ensure we collect that feedback. So at this point, as I mentioned, we are on the tail end of our focus groups for this web content strategy. Following that discovery phase, Madison Avenue Collective will present findings, in terms of findings from their focus group discussions, as well as some of the more technical analysis that they're doing behind the scenes that Logan kind of touched on. From there, we'll then be diving into actually some additional, I don't want to say focus groups, because they're going to be much more longer, kind of in-depth, key messaging development sessions, and then from there, in all candor, I'd have to go back and look at the web content strategy proposal to know what the next step would be, but we would basically be rolling out those messaging considerations and strategies, as well as any other structural or aesthetic consideration and standards across the landing pages of all 15 departments, as well as our homepage. So, that is a high-level overview, and I'll just go ahead and follow up with this project's proposal with all three commissioners, so you all can kind of get re-grounded on that timeline and have that greater degree of clarity.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah, Lilia, it seems like a long time ago in the process, we were shown, I wouldn't say a good, good public website, certainly, maybe it was also private, but that would help me. This is kind of theoretical, and imagine, use your imagination for what we should have, and on this particular subject, I don't have a lot of imagination, so it would be helpful, just like we were talking about, which I thought was a good idea, practical with the hybrid model of organized by departments, or you have a specific question and get routed that way, but I'm just not enough of a computer person website to, I've had a lot of good input for this discussion, same comment, Commissioner Weiss, it would have been helpful to have a heads up, but this is coming.
Certainly, Commissioner. Yep, I've got that noted, and we will follow up with you as well. Thank you.
One last question, Lilia. So I'm assuming that the next time that this topic would appear before us as a board is in that discovery phase, when you have a summary of all the quantitative and qualitative inputs and have a sense for direction of what some of those development-focused topics might be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, we are, this is a little bit early to head into item 3.5.3, and I would propose that we take a five-minute stretch break and come back, I guess it'll be eight minutes or seven minutes, come back at 10:30 to begin with the justice system improvement update, and Lilia and Neville will be reading that topic this morning.
Reminder to our members of the public, if you are interested in providing verbal testimony on the justice system improvement program, you, I'll ask that you alert me using the chat function, and I will add your name to the list. If you prefer to submit testimony, written testimony, please direct your attention to the chat, as I have pasted that email address into the chat for your use. At this time, I have three individuals that have indicated that they'd like to speak, so, again, please alert me via the chat function if you are interested in making comment. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, and I would also like to add to that, that given that if we only have three to five speakers, we'll, we'll have three minutes apiece, but if we have more than 10 people that would like to speak, we will be limiting the time to just two minutes apiece in order to maximize the opportunity for people. So thank you all, we'll be back at 10:30. Then, let's begin with item 5.3, uh, continued discussion and update on Justice System Improvement Program with Lilia and Neville presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning on behalf of Nick Hirth and Alyssa Rash. I will be presenting from the agenda packet this morning. I also will be moderating the public comment that we will be holding at the end of the presentation. In order to manage that comment, I'll ask that folks submit, using the chat function, indicating if they are liking to speak during that time. And for right now, I'll go ahead and get started. So the purpose of today's discussion is to really bring the final public involvement report to the Board of Commissioners. So as you all know, we have been conducting public engagement over the course of the last several months, beginning in June 2021. So I am going to advance to this page in the packet, page eight, and talk a little bit about the work that we've done over this time. So this is a list of speaking engagements and small group conversations that we have conducted. We've conducted over 26 of these, and in these small group conversations and speaking engagements, we have interacted with over 300-plus individuals. In addition to our small group meetings, we also have hosted two virtual community meetings, one in September and one in October. We had really great numbers in terms of engagement in a virtual environment for both of these meetings. Our first meeting, we had over 75 attendees, and in our second meeting, we had over 130 attendees. In addition to those engagement opportunities, the Justice System Improvement Program Manager, Nick Hirth, has also engaged with a community advisory committee, as well as a technical advisory committee, over the same period of time, and even longer, actually, to review and comment on the draft and final public involvement materials and PowerPoints. And then in addition to all of that, for our large group meetings, so the, the meeting that took place on September 8th, as well as on October 13th, we received an influx of feedback, comments, and questions, so much so that we weren't able to, in fact, capture it during the allotted time. So we've gone ahead and taken all of those questions, answered them, and then posted them on the Justice System Improvement website. So, um, the next page that I want to focus on is really kind of the next two pages. Here in my speaking notes, I have it, you know, as a two-page printout. So really, it's page nine and page 10 in your packet that I'm, I'm going to be speaking So what you're looking at, at page nine and 10 in your packet, is a high-level overview of themes that were heard during the speaking engagements and small group conversations. So across the pages, you'll see that we have transportation, equity, location, land use, correctional facility, crisis center, historic courthouse, emergency services, and financial impacts, as those kind of standout level themes. When you look into each one of those themes, what we have done on the public information side of the House is pulled out specific comments and quotes that really represent the sentiment of that theme. And so, for example, in transportation, when you look at the bullet points in the transportation theme, you can see that transportation is truly of great concern to our community. I'd also point out that within the location theme, we have several sub-themes that we have organized, in terms of west, south, downtown, and efficiency. So then, um, I'd like to focus on, choo-choo, sorry, uh, the page 12. So this is from our first community meeting, apologies, I went too far. Um, wait, I, I apologize. No, this is correct. I'm going off of a different PDF in my hand, I think. Yeah, this is what it is. So what I really wanted to focus on here is, um, these are the questions that we received on September 8th. So what we were just looking at was themes across small group discussions over four and a half months. What we're looking at on this page are themes from a specific event, and that event was on September 8th. So on September 8th, we had a panel of Justice System Improvement team members present, and then they took questions for about 40, 45 minutes. We had so much engagement that night that even though we took questions for 40 minutes, we, we still had plenty of questions left over. So what we've done here, starting on the page that I'm showing, is the verbatim questions from that September 8th meeting, kind of grouped by theme, so you can really see some standout trends. So you'll see that process, location, finances are here on that first page. It goes into the next page, where I really want to focus that, you can see in the facilities themes, there really was a large number of questions about the courthouse, in particular, the correctional facility, but also we can see questions about the crisis center and the sheriff's office emergency operations. So all of that content, you all, in fact, have seen one time before. So what is really new to you all is some of the feedback and the engagement summary from our meeting that we held just last week. So I'm going to direct your attention to, let's see, page 18 in your packet. And so what I really want to show is, um, this word cloud down here. So in our second big community engagement meeting, we took a different approach. In that first one, we did a lot of Q and A, but in our second community meeting, we really wanted to provide the opportunity for members of our public to, in fact, turn their microphones on, engage with each other, discuss, and, and really take note of that dialogue. With the COVID environment, it's changed how we do public engagement. We can't just all come to a table and sit around and, and discuss like how we would do. And so we had close to, not quite two dozen, but above a dozen county staff members facilitating small group meetings, I'm sorry, small group discussions during this large virtual meeting. And so this word cloud is a word cloud of all of the breakout rooms' note taker's notes for that first question of, why did you make your selection for what's most important to you? And of course, that first question was in relation to that poll. We had asked the audience, what's the most important topic of these topics that we had heard from you? Site came out far and beyond the front runner. And so when we sent folks into breakout rooms to talk about those poll results, this word cloud represents the frequency of how many times this word was represented in those breakout group notes. Of course, it's a word cloud, so it doesn't show sentiment, but you can see kind of sentiment in the public engagement results from the small group discussions, as I showed earlier on. The next section that I wanted to focus on was the next word cloud that really speaks directly to you all. So we asked the community members at this large public engagement meeting, what do you want the commissioners to keep in mind during their site selection deliberations? So again, that's a word cloud from all of the notes from our 17 breakout rooms that we had at last week's meeting. So it's really, um, I, I think word clouds are great, just in terms of, it's really easy to see the high level of frequency in terms of, of things that people were talking about. And then next, I really wanted to just point out that we had so much engagement at last week's meeting. We were actually unable, we elected not to put the entire chat log in this public information summary, because when we exported that chat log, we had, I think it's 27 to 30 pages of questions and comments. So what we have done is pulled a sampling of that out in that final report. Staff are currently working to go through all of those questions and provide the answers to the questions, as we've done in the past for previous community meetings, and then we'll be posting those online to our website. And so lastly, I will direct your attention to that final page in, in the conclusion. And so I'm just going to take a minute, frankly, to read aloud. So our public engagement over the last few months, from the small group discussions to the focus group discussions, to our large virtual engagement sessions, really showed some clear themes in terms of opportunities for the program. Those included improving community safety and security, the ability to respond to crisis, creating operational efficiencies by co-locating facilities, and by providing both accountability and treatment through programs and facilities. Additionally, we heard questions and concerns that included themes such as transportation impacts to neighborhoods, specifically with the proposed west site, concerns about the south site, including flooding, infrastructure capacity, and gateway issues, economic impacts of added taxes to residents, safety and property valuation concerns near correctional facilities, equity issues in relation to site geography and justice system data, and lack of trust in county financial decisions. So with that, Commissioners, I will be happy to take questions from you about the public information report that you'll find in your packet that I just walked us through.
Thank you, Lilia. We have since that public engagement meeting received, um, significant email correspondence from community members. It would be very helpful if, at some point, we could get some sort of a synthesis of the, and frequency and the, and the breadth of those comments as well. I think that they overlap pretty well with this report, but I want to make sure that if we have, that if those written comments go beyond this engagement report, that we capture that information in a systematic way.
Yes, certainly, Commissioner. So, um, those are both sort of within my umbrella, but there's, there's, they're parallel processes. So one process is occurring within our public information program, who, and those individuals are primarily supporting JSIP. Another process is within our administrative team and how we typically handle written testimony that comes in through email, or through the phone, or postal mail. So yes, I do want to assure you, as well as individuals, that any comment on the Justice System Program that comes in through email, postal mail, or by an individual who's calling to our main office, is all documented and then shared with all three commissioners. Yes.
Thank you. I think I'm going to have to do a, a deep dive into my email box to make sure that I capture everything and share it with you. Okay, Nancy, you have a question.
Just a clarifying question of what our process is going to be. Are we going to run through all of our thoughts and questions and then go to public testimony?
Uh, Madam Chair, what is your preference? Go ahead.
That, that was the intent, was to have an opportunity for us to ask questions of Lilia about this public engagement report and process, and then to shift to testimony.
Okay. Well, I do have several comments and questions. Um, I guess I will just jump right in, if that's okay with the Chair. Um, I wanted to start off by saying what I thought worked well and what was done well. I think the summary page is on page three of the document. Um, it's good. My notes, I'm going to say, great job, great expert summary. And I appreciate that it was accurate in, you know, distilling the opportunities, concerns, and questions, um, and accurately condensed everything, so I appreciate that. Um, I also appreciated the polls and the charts. I also appreciated the polls and the charts that were on page 11 of the report. I felt like that gave a very succinct, easy-to-read snapshot of what the participants at that time were thinking. That's helpful. I'd also be interested to see if we have the opportunity in the future to do that again and see how that snapshot might have changed with additional input. So I do have sort of one question, or one, can I please have the staff members address our issue that we had with the Zoom limitation on our October meeting, please?
Certainly. So I, my understanding is that in advance of the meeting, we purchased the license to have that increased capacity, knowing that we were going to have well over 100 individuals. Going into the meeting, it showed that we, in fact, had 280 individuals registered for the event. And as the event was beginning on our end, it showed that we still had plenty of capacity. What was happening was, quite frankly, the simplest way to explain it is we had paid our bill, but they hadn't turned on the extra service yet. So when we initiated the meeting and saw that we were capped at 100, staff got on the phone right away with Zoom tech support, verified our purchase, and then Zoom was able to, mid-meeting, switch over that capacity, which then clicked it in. So that is my understanding of what occurred in the meeting. With all candor, I'd have to tell you that I am not sure the status of the troubleshooting with Zoom following the meeting in terms of ensuring that something like that doesn't happen again.
Thank you for addressing that. And I'll just share, I did see a screenshot of our invoice and bill, and I will verify from my point of view that what you have said to Lilia is accurate. And I'll just state, too, that in life, hurdles pop up, that sometimes there's just nothing you can do about it. We all try our best. Our staff did a great job of clearing that hurdle, especially in a very sort of stressful, emotional time. And I just want staff to know they did a good job of that.
Much appreciated, Commissioner. Thank you.
So now I want to talk about the, some of the quotes and comments and the questions. I see that we write on here that the answers to the questions were put on the website. And I understand that maybe we don't want this document to get too large, but I also think that it's hard, it's hard for me as a commissioner, and I'm not just, you know, an average member of the public. It can be hard and frustrating to see things, questions in one place and then have to go somewhere else to find those answers. So I think we have an opportunity here to maybe add an appendix or an attachment to this document to include those. And the same with all of the, all of the comments from the chat. I would like an opportunity, I know you said it's very long, but again, if we could add those as an appendix or a attachment, I think that could be helpful, because I personally, unless I miss an email, I haven't even seen those yet. And I know staff are still working through the last meeting, but I think that would be helpful. And then I have a question about, it's page five in the report, page seven in our packet in your background. So we have a list of public involvement goals for this phase of program. And my question is just, where, how did we determine these goals and when?
Sorry, Commissioner, I just put my screen back on just to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So these goals were developed in conjunction with our Justice System Improvement Program Operations Team at the beginning of the summer, potentially late May, but I want to say very, very early June. Yes, no, that's true. It came to the end, at the end of May, and then we started engagement in June. So we talked over these goals, really, I would think, I think over a matter of two, maybe three, Justice System Operation Teams meeting. But I would invite members of the Ops Team who are on the call, County Administrator Kirby or Commissioner Ojuro, if you have a different recollection of how we came to these goals, I would ask that you offer that.
Lilia, that is my recollection as well. We, and to be a little more specific, given COVID and the extreme challenges of all that we're juggling, we had to turn to outside help to work on this project. And this was partly from the scope of work that we used to hire Kojito Consulting. And that was the context in which we developed these goals. In hindsight, if we've been thinking about process, we might have thought a little bit more about making these goals more site-focused, and the next public engagements round, starting in February, more focused on facilities. But we are all inventing as we go, and we are not perfect. So this was a set of goals that were developed at the time.
Commissioner Ojuro, I would also like to expand on your response, if you don't mind.
Please.
I just wanted to make sure that members of the public that have joined us this morning are aware of our, what we call our operations team. And it's a group of approximately seven staff members from various areas of our organization, including Commissioner Ojuro, representing the Board of Commissioners. And that operations team is led by Nick Kurt, who is the project manager for the Justice Systems Improvement Program. That group meets typically once a week to help guide the project and help inform the project manager as to the direction we're headed over time relative to this project. So I just wanted to make sure that members of the public have an idea of what the operations team is.
Well, thank you for that additional context, Joe. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And so as with any project, any good project has goals. And when we work on that or get to a stopping point, I like to go back and assess, did we meet our goals? And so I've looked at these a little bit. I'm just going to share my high-level view, and I'd be interested to hear what my fellow commissioners or anyone else, any other staff members think about meeting those goals. Number one, raise awareness about the county's approach to embracing prevention, treatment, and accountability in the justice system. I would say, no, we did not meet that goal. Our meetings came across mostly as site selections, and I think we could have done a better job, which we had talked about recently. We could have done a better job highlighting, you know, all the good work that we did from the criminal justice assessment, and conveying that to people as this is the reason why we are pursuing it. Gather perspectives about the Justice System Improvement Program from both involved community members and the general public. Yes, I think we did gather lots of perspectives, so that one was met. Listen carefully to people regarding program purpose, goals, and questions. I don't understand that goal very well, so I'm not sure how to answer that. Hear from a broad and diverse group of people. Consider all input, not just the loudest opinion. I think our report does show that we did a lot of outreach to a lot of different groups throughout the community, so I think we, yes, we met that goal. Thoughtfully consider community input, respond in a timely way, and explain the reasoning behind program decisions. Yes, I think we've mainly met that goal. I think, you know, we could always do better, we could always aim to do better, but I think we've mainly met that one. Build community trust as a strong foundation for the program. That's going to, for me, that's going to be a no. We did not meet that goal. And I feel like that should have been, you have to build the foundation before you try to do the work. So there's an opportunity there for us to work on. And determine the elements of a bond measure for the Justice System Improvement Program. I would say that is in progress. And moving forward, I think, you know, there were times that we lost control of our message. And any time that, you know, you are not going out there giving people the correct information, making sure that they have it, other information is going to pop up that may be not quite factual, and things get spread around, and then it just makes it really hard to overcome, you know, the rumors and maybe the misinformation that people heard first. So, you know, we did some good work, and then we also have some room for improvement. And then, like you said, we're kind of learning as we go.
I would also like to remind my fellow commissioners that we had a change of plans in midsummer after these goals were developed for our communications and engagement strategy. And that was that we initially were anticipating a May 2022 bond, and everything shifted to November. And frankly, I think in hindsight that that's a good thing. We need this time. We need more community conversation. We need to regain community trust. So, but that's reflected in these communication objectives as well. We were thinking about a truncated process at the time, and now we are really focused on a two-part decision-making process, focusing on site now and on the specifics of facilities as we move forward after more community engagement in the spring.
I appreciate.
And I see that as having a lot of room for opportunity there. Sorry.
No, no, no problem at all, Commissioner Wise. My apologies for cutting you off. I just wanted to say thank you for the feedback. I really appreciate your evaluation and your insights, and I'll be sure to pass them along, not only to the public information program, but certainly to our Justice System Operations Team, so that they can have that full consideration. Commissioner Malone.
Commissioner.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, a couple of comments. I'm glad Nancy raised the Zoom issue. There was some comments last Wednesday that we weren't doing things on the up and up. And I had the same experience a year and a half ago, maybe. Boys and Girls Club was doing, I think, luncheon fundraiser presentation, and just like we did, talked to Mr. Zoom and got it all set up. Yeah, you're, you have up to, I think it was 500, room for 500 participants, and that didn't happen. And I don't know if we were lucky or more skillful, but because of the Boys and Girls presentation, the whole hour was capped at 100, whereas I think ours was the first 10 minutes. So I think staff deserves credit for fixing that, and less than ideal, but got that issue resolved. The other, my comment has to do with Harvey Basil Whiteener's efforts in 2018, 2019. Can I briefly mention this in our, my comments last Wednesday? But that was a nice, wide community engagement forums, questions, and helped us develop what we want out of this program. And I think we need to revisit some of those conclusions and let community know some of them, right now behind what we're proposing at this point. There was considerable effort put into that, and I think of the people that think this has too heavy an emphasis on jail part, and not enough on program. And I think what we'll find going back is it was a blended approach. We need both. And I think we're, we've made some modest progress on the program side, but I think the conclusion out of a year and a half's worth of community forums was we need both. So I think that in future engagements, need to refer back to how we got to where we are now. And I think some of the momentum that we had a couple of years ago has been somewhat lost due to COVID and not being able to continue, plus staff changes. But there was good background information developed, and I think we need to reference going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate those comments, and I certainly will keep that in mind and pass that along.
Thank you, Lilia.
Yeah, certainly.
Are we ready to shift gears and take public comment?
I believe so, if there's no further questions or comments from the board.
Not at this time.
Okay. So at this time, I have six individuals that I have seen indicate to me that they'd like to speak. The order that I have them listed is Nancy Votrain, Douglas Parker, Jane Connolly, Shelley Sue, Jay Al, and Joanne Bunnage. Apologies in advance, or apologies for mispronunciations. At this time, since we do have six individuals per Commissioner Ojuro's direction, we will allow three minutes for comment per individual. I will be keeping track of time, and so at this time, I would invite Nancy Votrain to utilize your microphone, and if you'd like to utilize your camera to speak directly to our commissioners. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, just one moment, Nancy. Commissioner Malone.
Yeah, if the people speaking have also sent in written information, would they remind us of that, so we can refer to the emails that we've received.
Thank you, Commissioner. Great. Go ahead, Nancy.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Votrain, and I chose Betancourt as my home and my beloved community in 1979. I applaud all of you, commissioners, in your decision to address our mental health crisis by funding a proactive preventive crisis center as an alternative to punitive approach to incarceration. We live in a time of change, which requires thinking outside of the box. The mindset has been to build larger jails so we can incarcerate more people, much like we build bigger roads to sustain more vehicles. Outdated thinking. But in these times of housing inequality, environmental concerns, poverty, economic strain, addiction, mental illness, every decision we make requires looking at the barriers that exist in our service delivery and dedicating more money to evidence-based practices that more effectively ensure community safety, such as the proposed crisis center. I'd like to address two salient points, which I did send you in an email, from the article Broken Ground, which America keeps building more jail, or why America builds more jail, and what it can do instead. So number one is that community-based treatment is generally more effective than jail-based treatment, and success still depends on a jail's ability to link people to quality services in the community. Because jails house most people for a matter of only days or weeks, and thus, their capacity to make a lasting impact in terms of treatment is inherently limited without the existence of and coordination with high-quality healthcare and supportive services in the community. Newly expanded in-house capacities are likely to garner few long-term benefits for either the individual or the jail. the individual or the jail. With a larger jail, county taxpayers split the bill for a more expensive system to run. Beyond construction, there is an underestimated cost associated with building a larger jail, the additional cost of operations. Experts estimate that capital costs represent only 10% of the total cost of operating a new jail over 30-year periods. A larger jail, holding more incarcerated people, requires additional correction officers and healthcare staff, which typically make up three-quarters of the cost of running a jail. A larger jail population also requires higher expenditures for food, healthcare services, laundry, and utilities. In conclusion, a growing number of counties like ours are renovating older facilities instead of building larger jails. Smaller, maintaining smaller jail populations by investing in community-based services and voting down proposals to build bigger jails. I encourage and support your decision to go slowly and develop the crisis and I support you developing the crisis center as planned. I applaud you for giving up your space so that can happen, your office space. Please spend more time seriously considering how we can change our mindset and collaborate as city and county programs and services that can create efficient and effective solutions for our community members to thrive rather than be incarcerated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. At this time, I would like to invite Douglas Parker to utilize your microphone and your camera if you would like to submit your comment to our board.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time. I did send a letter last week to each one of you. And I have been following this issue for some time in the paper as much as I can. And one of the issues which seems to come up with each of the sites, whether it's the West or the South or downtown or the McFadden property or any other, is the concern by the public in each of those areas that about people coming and going. The release is talked about, but also the people are coming and going to the justice center. And I have never heard anyone talk about, okay, we're going to put these measures into place which will mitigate the danger to any of our areas that we finally choose for the release or to the comings and goings of the people who are being incarcerated or who are going to courts. In other words, why are we not bringing it to the public? These are the, are the measures that will mitigate. In other words, we'll transport people away from a justice center to the West or to the South or downtown. We'll transport them and make sure that they're away from residential areas. I haven't heard you speak to that and I would certainly like for you to give it due consideration. I'm glad you're slowing down a little bit because if this comes to voters, voters are going to want to know what you're doing to mitigate the release of people. These are the questions that come up in every site. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to invite Jane Connolly to speak next, utilizing your microphone and if you prefer to use your camera. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm speaking from two perspectives today. One is as a resident of Grand Oaks and the other is as a court-appointed special advocate for children in foster care. As a COTSA, I understand the need for a larger jail to accommodate the increase in inmates and also to provide the necessary services to help inmates address the issues that make them engage in crime to begin with. I also understand the very real need for a crisis center and for a more appropriate and accessible courthouse. I find, however, that it's unacceptable to move the courthouse and jail and to establish a crisis center away from the center of Corvallis, where there are essential resources that people using these facilities need, such as milestones, COI, shelters, churches, Benton County Health, attorneys, CASAs, and for that matter, simply food services. I also note that the city center is easily accessible by car, public transportation, and walking, something that doesn't apply to the West proposal. As a resident of Grand Oaks, I'm also concerned about the impact of a justice center on the surrounding residential area. It will be literally in our backyard and in the backyard of the other residential communities, just, I guess, east of us. There will be an impact on valuable recreational resources of Bald Hill and the Fairgrounds. The increase in crime is a certainty with inmates being released near our homes. The increase in traffic, not just through the residential areas, but on 53rd and Reservoir, which are both just two-lane roads and already heavily traveled. There will be an increase in noise and light pollution. And that is something that concerns me both for the flora and fauna on Bald Hill, but also for myself, who is light and sound sensitive. And I chose Grand Oaks precisely because of the reduced noise and reduced light at night. I am concerned about the impact on our property values and also simply on being able to sell a house with a jail right in our backyard. I therefore ask you all to really consider the impact that this has on the community where you're going to place this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Shelley Sue to utilize your microphone and if you prefer your camera as well to submit comment to the board.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. I am also a resident of Grand Oaks and I really want to parrot what Ms. Connolly and Mr. Parker have also said. I really came here today to demand that Benton County Commissioners remove the West site from consideration for the proposed jail project. We have had two previous meetings with Benton County Commissioners and they explained in detail about their process for site development. I believe they said they had 40 or so sites originally that were chosen. And they also said at that time that any potential site that was located in a residential area was immediately removed from consideration. So I'm really a little bit confused and dismayed why the West site that is currently under consideration has not been also removed. We are directly adjacent from the proposed jail site, literally within 100 feet. And I really consider that to be a residential area. The Grand Oaks subdivision has a minimum of about 340 homes. We have lots of children here and there are other homes directly in the vicinity as well. This is, in a sense, a residential area and I think it should have been given the same sort of consideration for removal, just as other residential sites were. Now, you have also mentioned, many of the other people that have spoken have talked about traffic, light pollution, wetlands, all these other things. And I agree with all of those. One of my major concerns continues to be the release of prisoners. I know that some people have said, oh, well, we'll just pick them up and drop them off somewhere. But I'm concerned as to where in the world would you drop prisoners off to? I can't imagine that any place that you chose would not be met with some consternation. I think that there are other jail sites that have been proposed that would make a better site for this project. I chose to live here in Grand Oaks before its livability and other amenities. I do believe Grand Oaks is a residential neighborhood. I do believe the proximity of the jail site is ridiculous. And I really think that we should be excluded from consideration as a potential site for this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Joanne Bunnage to use your microphone and if you prefer your camera and speak to our commissioners.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to say a few words about this proposal. I do recognize the amount of work that has gone into this by commissioners as well as the consulting agency. As somebody who spends her professional career doing research and assessment, I know the information that you have gathered is important, but the words and the meaning behind that information is equally as important. And in all due respect, a word cloud does not capture what is needed for this critical decision. My parents, my mother moved to Corvallis in 1938 and actually picked berries and other fruit and produce in the area where we're considering expansion. I moved back here for the third time and moved into Grand Oaks and did so because partly the neighborhood feels, the location close to Bald Hill and the quick access to campus where I worked. I find this site off of Reservoir Road 100% unacceptable. Literally a stone's throw from the tree farm, from dear neighbors and colleagues' homes, not just in Grand Oaks, but on Cherry, and not to mention the thousand units that are proposed in the Mary's annexation. I'm concerned about safety and livability. I'm also extraordinarily worried about traffic. The traffic issue was very much at the forefront of West Hill's neighbors in regards to the annexation. And if we add this facility with constant traffic in and out of the facility, it further stresses already busy roadways. I can't imagine those living in the Elm Heights in the College Hill neighborhood being amicable to traffic coming down their streets, which inevitably will have to take place because there will not be sufficient road access on West Hills or out to Floma Boulevard. I can't believe in a county the size of Benton County, there are not more viable options than in literally the back door of a significant neighborhood. I applaud the thought of having a crisis center and I encourage you, really expect you, to look at more creative solutions than one large facility in my backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, those are all of the names that I have on my list for individuals that were wishing to provide comment. But I do want to provide one final opportunity if there is anyone who has joined since the last time I gave that instruction. Okay, with that, Commissioner Ojero, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Lilia, and thank you to all of you who took this opportunity to speak directly to us. We will take all of your comments into account. We are taking a little bit more time. We know this is a terrifically difficult decision for all of you and for all of us to make as well. We will be thinking about what we need to do on behalf of the entire county and what makes the most sense for all of us from both a livability, safety, and a financial perspective locked away. So much appreciate your investment of time and energy. At this time, we'll be moving on to our regular business meeting with the consent calendar. There's only one item on our consent calendar today. It's the approval of our September 21st, 2021 board meeting minutes. Are there any changes or additions to the notes? Do I hear a motion?
We move to approve the consent calendar.
Agreed. All in favor, please signify with an aye. 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 Okay, thank you. Next up, item 7.1 is in the matter of proclaiming October as the Great Oregon Shakeout Month in Benton County, and Sierra Anderson will join us for that.
Good morning, everybody. Or I guess almost afternoon at this point. Thank you all for having me this morning. I'm sorry, I have some issue with my camera. But I'm here in place of finally to talk about the Great Oregon Shakeout, which is this month, actually on Thursday at 10:21 a.m. I think it's important that we take, we as emergency management professionals and us as a county to emphasize the importance of emergency preparedness. We take an opportunity to, we take every opportunity we have to practice emergency preparedness. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation here. In the matter of proclaiming October as the Great Oregon Shakeout Month in Benton County, whereas the threat of the Cthedra Subduction Zone earthquake will greatly impact the entire region, including the residents of Benton County, Oregon, and whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and Federal Emergency Management Agency have identified the Cthedra Subduction Zone earthquake as a major national-level threat, and whereas when individuals take responsibility for preserving their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following the disaster is greatly increased, and whereas the Oregon Shakeout was designed to bring awareness of the threat of both crustal and subduction zone earthquakes, and whereas the Benton County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Division partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies to inform individuals on how to take action through our public education campaigns and community exercises. And whereas residents, businesses, and visitors of Benton County, Oregon are urged to plan ahead for all disasters and encourage their family and their friends to also do so by participating in annual readiness events and drills. And whereas Benton County Emergency Management and the Benton County Emergency Operations Center staff will participate in the national-level exercise Cthedra Rising 2022. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Benton County Board of Commissioners, October 2021 as the Great Oregon Shakeout Month, and encourage all community members, businesses, and visitors to develop their own emergency preparedness plans and practice basic earthquake safety drills such as drop cover and cordon on October 21st at 10:21 a.m. Pacific Standard Time. Adopted this day, the 19th day of October 21, and fine, are you all?
Thank you, Sierra. Do I hear a motion of approval?
As a longtime volunteer firefighter, I would love to move to approve proclaiming October is the Great Oregon Shakeout Month in Benton County, Proclamation 2021, Day 020.
Agreed. Is there any discussion or any questions for Sierra? Okay, then all in favor, please signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Sierra, very much for this proclamation and for all that you do on behalf of the county in our emergency preparedness.
Thank you, I'm happy to do it. Have a great Tuesday, everybody. Take care.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, item 8.1, old business, in the matter of second reading approving ordinance 2018, 0287 ambulance service plan, Bent.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an item that just...
This is an item that just sort of popped up as Teresa Farley was going through the paper copies at the Board's office in anticipation of relocating the office over to the Calicoe building. Came across file with the board minutes from September 2018, which contained the first reading of this ordinance. And then when Teresa went to look for, showing that there'd been a second reading or that the ordinance had been formally adopted, she couldn't find it. So she scoured the board minutes for several months afterwards, couldn't find any evidence that the board had completed the process of an act of ordinance, and brought it to my attention. And now bringing it to you to complete the process. So just as a little bit of background, this particular ordinance is an amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter 19. That Chapter 19 contains our ambulance service plan requirements. Within that code section, there is a, there was a provision that called for establishment and maintenance of a county committee, Emergency Medical Advisory Committee. Over the years, from the time this was adopted until the ordinance was brought to the board back in September 2018, the necessity for that committee had waned to the point where the fire chiefs, the ambulance folks, no longer believed that EMAT was a necessary committee. As a result, we brought forward to the board an amendment to Chapter 19 that would eliminate this committee, which the members of the city no longer felt necessary. Fairly straightforward request to amend our ordinance to eliminate this requirement. Board agreed, conducted a first reading, there was no second reading down. I'm bringing it up to you for a second reading. As a legal point, our Benton County Charter requires a first reading of our ordinance and then it states a minimum timeframe between the first and second reading, which is 14 days. It does not have a maximum timeframe, which in this case is good, we don't have to start the process. If this had been an ordinance where we were changing legal requirements or where we're creating or withdrawing regulatory elements of our Benton County authority, I would recommend that we start the process fresh with a new public hearing and a new first reading opportunity. This is not one of those ordinance. For all, for all practical purposes, that second reading may as well have occurred because the Emergency Medical Advisory Committee has not met for over three years. The effect of this ordinance has already taken place. Now we're just coming to you, asking for you to complete the process, which, and please don't ask why this didn't come up for a second reading, we have no idea. I think this is the proverbial, something slipping through the cracks. But here it is, we found it on the floor, dust comes off, and we're bringing it back to you for a second reading.
Are there any questions for Vance?
Just appreciate the timeline and that it's still, it's still as good as ever. So that's, I think the Congress, and if you don't pass it by the end of the session, then you start over. So that's, I appreciate that background. And now I understand why you pronounced "old" so funny. I thought maybe, maybe you were just feeling old this morning, but appreciate the clarification.
Ouch. I think that was aimed at me, Vance, but you know.
I felt before you, though.
Uh huh, understood. Okay. All joking aside, if there are no questions, do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move to conduct a second reading of ordinance number 2018, page 0287, amending Benton County Code, Chapter 19, Ambulance Service Area Plan.
Agreed.
Okay, all in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
Second reading?
Second reading.
All right. For the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending Benton County Code, Chapter 19, Ambulance Service Area Plan, ordinance number 2018-0287. Now therefore, the Benton County Board of Commissioners will be announced follows. This ordinance shall be known as Benton County Code, Chapter 19. All right, and this one will become effective formally on November 18, 2021. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Appreciate Teresa finding this and tying up these loose ends. Otherwise, I would have missed an awful lot of EMAT meetings.
Tip of the hat to Teresa for catching this and bringing it up. So, well done, Teresa.
Okay, onwards to new business. Item 9.1, Discussion and Decision Approving Order, B21-071, granting authority and designating custodian of financial business, Mary Ottley and Rick Crager, Financial Services.
Great, Commissioner. And what we're bringing forward, what I'm bringing forward here today is handing off of my authority to transact financial effects on behalf of the county to Rick. So this is kind of exciting for me to officially do that. This gives, this order designates Rick as the Chief Financial Officer and Cash Custodian, Jim Crascher. We're still in the process of getting the automatic signature block through MUNIS. So for a while now, we're going to have a joint, I'm assuming this is okay, Vance? Right now, in order for the checks to be signed, my name's still going to be on it until we get the key that goes with, through MUNIS for Rick. So, but he does have the authority to enter into banking transactions with the passage of this order. Is there any questions about, about this transaction and this changing of the guard?
Just how do you feel, Mary? Does it feel like a weight lifted from your shoulders?
I know, all those check sites I sign up, yeah. No, it is, it actually feels, it feels, you know, finally, we tried to do this earlier in the year and pulled this off the agenda. So it's really exciting that there's someone here to pass this to. And thank you very much, Rick, for taking that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my fellow commissioners? Comments from Rick? Okay.
And I do think that, no, thank you, Commissioner. No, then for me, just again, glad that Mary is finally going to be able to move forward and join her retirement and happily to take the responsibility. I'll do my best to fill in, in her shoes going forward, but I know those are certainly big shoes to fill. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you both. And I would like to remind anyone that's here with us today to please turn their microphone off. We're getting a little bit of background noise off and on here. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, I'd just like to, it's been said before, but Mary, we really appreciate you hanging in there and keeping the county finances going as we worked hard to find your replacement. But it took slightly longer than we, we were planning on. But thank you for being such a team player and I was always reassured that we were in good hands and knowing that somebody out there will, will replace you. We just weren't quite sure of the timeline. And hello, welcome to Rick. Geez, you've got three weeks on, on the job now. You're, another week, you'll be an old pro. So welcome to you.
Thank you for that. And with that, I would happily entertain a motion. And whoever's driving, whoever's driving with their mic on, could you please turn your microphone off?
Not me. I'll move to add, Dr. Order Number B2021, page 071, in the matter of granting authority to provide banking services, designating custodian, custodian of funds, county treasurer and investment officer.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Thank you both. Have a good rest of the day. Moving on to item 9.2, Discussion and Decision to Approve the Environmental Health Fee Schedule for 2022, Bill Leminger, Environmental Health. And we have heard this topic before in work sessions, so this one should be fairly short and sweet as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy to be here. This is a way of a quick recap. In 2002, our fees were last adjusted on average 35%. Because of the pandemic, last year, a lot of our environmental health staff and resources were allocated to Emergency Operations Center and assisting on vaccination clinics. And in recognition of the difficult time that business has had, last year, we voted in a 50% credit based on our 2020 license that was applied to the 2021 license. No fee adjustments were made in 2020. And prior to that, in 2019, our fees were increased about 3% on average. We're recommending no fee increase this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Malone? Yeah, Bill, I appreciate kind of the thoughtful way that you've navigated through the fee structure. Like I mentioned before, I appreciate regular, relatively small adjustments if that's necessary. And then with the extraordinary circumstances we've had in the last couple of years to be flexible and try to make sense out of the current situation that nobody could plan for. So I appreciate that and happy to support this effort.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'm with to approve Order Number 2021, page 073, revising the environment health fee schedule effective January 1, 2022.
Agreed.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much, Bill. We appreciate it and enjoy the rest of the day.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great day, everybody.
Okay, on to other. The first item under other is consideration of whether we want to sign on to the letter from Patrick Sponsler with respect to requesting funds from the state legislature to put towards mediation to reduce eviction statewide. We already work with the mediation program and we know from Community Services Consortium that they really value the mediation efforts that are provided to us to help people, people in their homes. So I would certainly recommend that we sign on to this letter. And for that, would one of you be willing to make a motion?
Sure. I'll, let's see, I'll move to Benton County's support requesting funding from the state New Oregon Legislature for mediation of eviction disputes.
Agreed.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. I will get back to Patrick Sponsler with that approval and they can move forward to get their letter. Next, we will go into executive session. So at this time, I would like to ask all of our participants to sign off. And it'll take us about five minutes to clear the board meeting room as well. Thank you, John, for providing us the Facebook Live feed. And we will return at probably 11:50 to begin our executive session under ORS 192.6602EE.